...of City Council of City Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, 301 South 5th Street. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Sean Ursery from Fellowship of New Hope Church. You come forward. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we just ask, God, that you come into this place, Father, and just fill us with wisdom and with discernment. And, God, I thank you for every person that is sitting here tonight that are making these decisions for our town. And, God, we just ask that your Spirit covers our town of Papa Bluff. And, God, I just ask that you come into this room tonight, Father, and just that your will is done in everything. But, God, just grant us the wisdom to handle all of the issues that come up tonight, God, in a way that pleases you and prospers our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. And now we'll have our Girl Scout Troops, 707-12, to come forward. And they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you girls will come forward to the microphone. Thank you very much for coming out on this rainy night. Aren't they cute?
Yes, come right over here.
If you guys want to turn around and wave at the camera, you can before we do the pledge. There you go. All the little girls come in front there. Okay, is everybody here? All right. He's going to be our leader. You can bend, can you bend it down for us so she can just pull it down? Yeah, there you go. Just like that. Yeah, you can come over here. Okay. Are you ready? We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I can't like...
Your voice will go all the way up there if you talk real big.
Hold on, bounce board there or take it loose for me.
To the...
There you go. Okay.
To the P- Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. It's due to Republic, born with its stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. That was precious.
Girls, they can turn around and wave at the camera there if you want.
I was a girl scout when I was about your size. Whoops. So, maybe you can grow up and be the mayor, too. Thank you all very, very much. Well, how do you follow that act? Let me see.
Not very well.
Not very well. Okay, let's try. Ms. Kirby, we'll have the roll call, please. Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman. Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Black.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing either with any item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we move to citizens' input. Item six, each person in the audience, they take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. And my first person to come forward is Mr. Jack Altman. And I know we have your address here, but for the record, we need you to state your address for Ms. Kirby. And you might want to pull that microphone back down. Thank you.
My name's Jack Altman. The address is 2404 West Maude Street, Unit 3, Papa Bluff, Missouri. Thank you for hearing me tonight, Councilman Mayor. I'm here to speak a little bit on some of the investigating and the police, the thefts that are happening in the local, in our area. February 11th, myself and another family member became victim to that and was robbed quite a bit out of a storage unit here locally in town. We did call the police and they said that when they came down, they get us the report, told us to fill out the report and everything, but not once did they ask us what was taken, look in any units. My father started questioning them. The police officer said that we could have interfered with their investigation and hindered it by contaminating evidence such as fingerprints, footprints, anything like that. How could we have contaminated something if he had not even known and we'd even been into our unit? He never asked no questions. He never took no, looked around, anything. He just assumed everything there. The act of investigation is a thorough attempt to learn the facts about something, whether it's foreign or indicate. But we should have known that he should have come forward and I feel that he just kind of blew us off. And it's become common knowledge that, I know, I was told myself, you're wasting your time, don't call the police department, they're not going to act on it. I've had several business owners as well, citizens, tell me this, you know? Quit wasting your time, there not going to be nothing done. I just feel that, you know, when's enough enough? We got to have some kind of action here from the police department, some kind of help. It's getting to the point, myself, I've heard people say that if I catch a thief, I'm going to take it in my own hands. Well, then that person's going to jail for something, protecting their own property, you know? If it's not that we don't have enough police on the force, then maybe the council ought to look at budgeting, what we can budget to make and have more police on the force where they can get around and come and help with these investigations. Another thing, they told us that if less we catch them in the act, there's nothing that can be done. The officer himself said that. Well, just a couple of days later, my father caught someone going through another unit about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, and he called the police department and it took him almost 45 minutes to respond. They was on another call, I'm sure, but there's going to always be other calls. So, then therefore, we should come back where we need more officers or something on patrol. But when he did tell them that he caught the guy, they were stacking his stuff right by the door, by the time the police department got there, he was gone. So, I mean, when is enough? We got to have some kind of, make us feel safe, you know? Make the citizens feel like we want to be protected by the police, we want, but it's almost like you're wasting your time calling the police, so what do you want to do about it, you know? And I'm just here on myself and I think I speak to a couple of the other, you know, members of the community, you know, that we're just tired of being robbed blind. So, let's see what we can do to, you know, fix this problem, at least look at it and address it some more. Because it's becoming a public nuisance.
Yes, Councilman Black?
I'm sorry you've had a loss. I can tell you that as a councilperson, over the years, I've spent a lot of hours and a lot of shifts with the police. And what you're describing is not what I have seen. I'm not trying to debate you on what your experience was, but I can tell you that is not what I have observed in being with them on a number of times. And I'm sure, I want you to know that I truly believe they do the best they can. And I don't know, I see Chief Whitley's here tonight, he might want to speak to this or he might not. But again, I don't mean to belittle what you have said or take away from it in any way of what your feelings are. But I do want to hold up for the police also and say that I don't believe your experience and your feelings are routine for us. I think they do a good job.
I just feel that, I want to feel secure in my home and in my units where I'm at, knowing that I'm not going to be robbed blind. And I understand, you know, the police do what they can, where they can, when they can. I completely understand that, you know? But if we don't have enough officers on the force, there's going to always, we can never control and say that we'll have enough, there's going to always be another call. We just have to classify them. But, you know, we have to, the citizens want to feel safe, you know? And I'm telling you, from what I'm hearing in the public and everything, they don't. I was told I was even wasting my time by coming here tonight.
No, you're not wasting your time by coming here. Are these personal storage units or rooms?
Yes. And a police officer told me, and I'll tell you where it's at, it's down the ones behind the ambulance lumber. And officer told me himself, he says, "I come through here several times a night." He told me that. I talked to the owner of the building, y'all know who the owner of that company is. He says, "Jack, they don't come through here near as often as they used to." He said, "I can show you the videotapes." I have videotapes. He sees every car comes through there, he said, "They don't come through here near as often as they did a year or two years ago."
Did they review those videotapes?
Yes. They're coming in on bicycles.
They're coming in on bicycle, but they couldn't find anything to identify?
And they didn't even break into my unit, they broke into my father's unit next door and then climbed over the top of the ceiling into mine. And, I mean, it is what it is. That's my risk that I take for putting my stuff, you know, somewhere else. I totally accept responsibility for that. I just want to know, I feel that there could have been a little more professionalism, you know? When the officer told me that we hindered his investigation, when he never asked no questions, he never looked, he never even introduced himself to me.
I feel like this is not really under the council's jurisdiction, but under our city manager, it sounds like we have several issues, personnel being one of them. And so, Mr. Massingham may want to speak to it as well, but it won't be taken lightly. I mean, I'm sorry you had a loss. And again, the police, we are, we are so blessed to have this fabulous police department that we have in Papa Bluff. I go to a lot of state meet, wide meetings, and people are not as blessed as we are with such a good working relationship with their police department. So, we are fortunate in that way. It's unfortunate that you've had this loss. And just a few weeks ago, if you remember, there was a huge rash of thefts and they caught the guys throwing the jewelry out the window. And in my insurance world, we had several of those people insured that had losses and they did recover some of their items. So, it's few and far between, I know, because, you know, when they steal this stuff, they're just trying to get rid of it to make money to, for bad reasons more than likely.
And I hate to classify people, but we know what's happening.
But I think we have several issues to address here, and so, Mr. Massingham?
Well, I think that, you know, with any business, and the police department's a business just like any other, you know, it all goes to management. And I'm not taking nothing against Chief Whitley, he does a great job, you know, and everything. But I just, I don't know if it's understaffed or what, I just, I feel that we could maybe address these issues a little differently and look, you know, I just make, like I said, make the citizens feel safe, you know? Because we don't. We don't feel safe in our own home.
And we don't know until you tell us. So, we appreciate your input and I thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. I'm sorry it's an unfortunate incident, but Mr. Massingham, I'm sure will address it. Would you like to say anything tonight?
Yes, Mr. Altman, I'll get with Chief Whitley and pull the report on it and we'll just kind of discuss what happened and look in to see what we can do.
All right. Thank you very much.
And I'm so sorry I had to come to this.
That's all right.
Hopefully, we can catch it at another level, maybe you won't have another loss.
Let's just try to prevent it and everything.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, oh, goodness!
Oh.
This is serious. Somebody help him up.
Is that thing up farther than he usually is?
Well, it's because it's way up here, it's not straight across and it's not all taped down. But it has this. Can you pull it straight? Yeah, we'll move it back after a while. A little girl trip there.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirby.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman DeGaris?
On the incident with the police officers, you know?
Can you get your microphone closer? I can't hear you.
On the incident with police officers, I've heard a lot of positive things from our officers, the things they do, the way they treat people. And I know they, you know, got a lot of calls that they don't get to as fast as we'd like for them to. But they've got a whole city to protect and they do the best job they can do and I'm proud of what they do.
I agree with you and I'm sure this whole council does, but we'll check into it and see what this isolated incident is and see if we can get to the bottom of it. And I hope Mr. Altman's okay. Anyone else has citizen input that's not on the agenda would like to come forward tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and consider it separately, he or she may request to do so.
Make motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. Mr. Todd Sweeney from the Navigate Building Solutions will appear before the City Council on how their company assets assist government agencies in building a new building. And Mr. Todd Sweeney, if you'd like to come forward, we'll let you move that around. And if these guys want to move, pull that chair back this way so it won't be in front of them. Put one one direction on the other probably. There you go. We'll let them get situated on the other side so they can, they can view. If any of the audience members would like to see this, you just have to kind of congregate, this is the best we can do for now. But this is another step toward getting our situation fixed. Anybody else over here want to?
Two, four, five left.
I've got four.
Oh, did they get, do you both got yours? And someone want to get the lights? Let me think where they're at. Matt, can you find them for us?
There's one right there.
I think Matt can reach them. Thank you, hon. Does that give you enough lights to do what you need?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Using Mike's computers some of the best I can here. I apologize for the delay. We'll get this up and going fairly quickly.
Well, sorry we couldn't have you set up a little more conveniently, but we'll make do. You can't hear? He's not speaking in the mic just yet, but we'll get him to speak for you. Thank you.
I sure will, thank you.
Is that better? Do you want to move forward? No, okay. Yeah, he wasn't in the mic yet, he's still loading his computer. But let me know if you can't hear. And the secret is to keep your mouth closed to the microphone.
You have a very long evening tonight, so thank you very much for your patience. I know this is the last thing you want to spend your time doing.
You may need to go to ER.
There we go.
Because we're on this.
All right.
Okay, we're ready. Yes.
Awesome. My name is Todd Sweeney with Navigate Building Solutions. I'm co-founder of the organization. I want to, first and foremost, and hopefully at some point, this will pop into slideshow mode, thank you, we're very excited to be here, or I'm very excited to be here, even though it's a rainy, cold day. Five or six months ago, Mark, I think I met with you and Ron and came down here and heard that you guys might be considering some new capital improvements, some new facilities for the city. And in that role or in that journey, we often find that we can often play a positive and effective role in the cities and municipalities that are seeking to do a planning, design, and construction effort within their community. So, we talked about your project and I'm going to go through some slides today and very quickly, because we're hoping to keep this down to 15, 20 minutes, what I was told with a few minutes for questions and answers. I would encourage you to ask questions at any time. If they pop up, just hold me up, we'll get them knocked out, we'll keep on going. So, let me see if I can, for some reason, is this mode okay? Normally, it would be in a full screen mode, but can you see that? I don't want to take the time to slow down.
And we have a copy here, so we're good.
Yep. All right. First of all, we have an agenda, so the thank yous have already been made, and thank you for giving me the time. We're going to talk quickly about Navigate and we're going to introduce ourselves, our services and our qualifications. A lot of it's in the books, we won't spend a whole lot of time there. Because I think what's really important is talking about Phase 1 and Phase 2 services that could actually make an impact on what you're trying to accomplish or may try to accomplish with regards to potentially new facilities for the city. And then lastly, we would talk about compensation, return on investment, how we generate value, and potentially a way to onboard us, should indeed we make sense as a potential tool for the city moving forward in this journey. If I'm in your way, I totally apologize, gentlemen. So, who are we? So, Navigate Building Solutions is a consulting firm. Okay, we're not architects, we're not designers, we're not builders. We're a consulting firm that specializes in providing project management solutions to public agencies seeking to build newer renovated facilities. We've been around as a team since 1999. We worked as a division of a very large corporation from 99 to 2016, and at that time, my co-founder and I started Navigate Building Solutions. What allowed us to do is provide our services even more effectively than we did before. We don't have the overheads, we don't have the costs, we're lean, mean, and what we do is we specialize in public agencies. Okay? Uh-oh, I might have to push these buttons a little quicker, I think. What we, I think I skipped one or two. I apologize again. Next time I come down, I'm going to use my projectors, I think it will connect up a little quicker. What we do, we provide owner representation, we represent owners that are going through the process, we facilitate the planning, design, and construction process associated with the new capital improvement project, we continuously update and define and implement the next steps. Okay, what do we got to do next? How do we do it? What are the tools? What are the resources? What are the consultants? How do we go from step one, which would be identifying the site, right, and a program to move it in? All along that journey. We manage and coordinate all the vendors, suppliers, consultants, and contractors. What we don't do, and this is important, we do not build. By state law, we're not, as a consultant that's hired on qualifications, allowed to actually build the project. And this is important, because when we give you estimates, we give you budgets, we give you costs, we give you value engineering, we're not invested in any way in that advisory role that we provide, the advice we give you. We're not invested in the product, because we're not selling products. Okay, when we give you a budget, we're not giving you a bid, we're giving you a budget of what we believe will be the value of the bids that are received at some point on your project for the work to be completed. Okay? Hopefully by local contractors and vendors and suppliers in your region. I did push that button, so let's see if it, there we go. What qualifies to do this, as I mentioned before, we specialize in public agencies. We're the only firm in the state of Missouri that does that. There's other firms that do, we were talking, Mayor, earlier about a firm we know that does it for roller coasters, they do it for Anheuser-Busch, they're theme park guys. There's hospital folks that do what we do. There's school folks that do what we do. We're the only one in the state of Missouri that specializes in consulting for public agencies. Okay? We've been doing it since 1999, as I mentioned before, and we average about four city hall police stations a year. Okay, we've done dozens and dozens of these type of facilities, which means not only do we understand Missouri state requirements, how do we cross the Ts and dot the Is to make sure that everybody, especially sitting behind the table here, feels comfortable and knowledgeable that they've done the right thing? That we've done the right thing in accordance with state law and local ordinance. And then two, do we have an expert next to us that's guiding us, that actually knows how to build these facilities? And the answer to both those questions is yes, with Navigate.
I see you have some of our local cities, our neighboring cities that you have done work for.
We sure do. And I pushed the down button, so it might slide past that, and I didn't mean to be disrespectful.
That's okay. Cape Girardeau, Wentzville, Baldwin, Creve Court, just for the audience to hear, Union. So, that's good to hear.
Yeah, thank you very much. We actually, and all those projects are the ones done the last, last two years, the ones from the previous slide. This is just a recap on the law enforcement, a lot of those same names are on there, Clayton, St. Charles, Creve Court, Biscion. We've done, we did Dunkland County's Law Enforcement Center and Sheriff Station, gosh, back in early 2004, maybe it was. Cape Girardeau's new courthouse, we were involved with the front end of getting that launched. They currently have a builder penzo that's building that forum that's ongoing. You'll see the same thing with city halls. And this is unique only in that I want to reinforce that we are qualified to do this. So, as we speak about your job, it brings value, because part of what we're trying to do is give you benchmark data and the ability to make knowledge-based decisions. If I'm sitting in your shoes and somebody's asking me, where do we put the building? What do we want to build? I can't necessarily debate the subjective items. You know, should it be a catalyst for revitalization? Should it be the front door to the neighborhood? But what I can give you is the idea and the concept of what it costs to build there and what you can build there. Because that in of itself can define your answers, you know, as a, as a community leaders. So, that really jumps into the first phase of services that we propose, propose for your project, which is site evaluation and budget development. My understanding is there's been a lot of discussion, and discussion only, we understand there's been no conclusions certainly made by the city and by you as leaders regarding the potential to build a new city hall, a potential to build police station. So, the first question needs to be answered is what can we build and where? What do we want to build and where? That decision by itself launches everything. It launches everything from who to bring on next, what consultants to procure, how do we drive the process from step one to step 10, which is move in. It starts really with our involvement and we lead this, and we've led it for multiple cities. You're at a point, and quite frankly, a lot of cities struggle in this point more than any other place in the process, because it's the launching off part. It feels like the biggest decision and yet you're not given the data to actually make it. All right? We had the same situation happen with Baldwin last year, and St. Charles County Ambulance District at the end of last year, it feels like it's, it feels like we're further along in 2019. But both those projects we did last year, a year and a half ago, we were working with Glendale. In each of those situations, we're trying to help them define what to build, what, you know, what do you want to build and where. Our, for services for this, because people always ask, we're off the bat, what do we cost? So, I thought I'd start with it rather than end with it. Generally, we're about $15,000. Okay? It involves evaluating three to four sites and working with your city to come back with you at the end of the day with a product that says, these are your options, this is what you can build here, and this is what the budget would be should you decide to move forward. To take that in more detail, the first thing we do is we're going to try to define the what. The what's a gathering of data. We're not suggesting that we go through an extensive, spend $25,000, $50,000 for a needs assessment or have an architect come in and do all the programming required for your building. Okay? Because we don't need to right now. There's a tremendous amount of benchmark data. You know the type of facility you live in and you know the square foot that you're using, you know what departments are in your city hall. Same thing with your police department. You know the size of it, you know the growth trends. We can use that to come up with some approximate square footages. Okay, what could these potentially be approximately? They'll still need to be vetted, that's a design phase function. That's not a, that's not a, that's not a want and a where, that's a step that's taking place later. What we found is when we streamline that and get right to the idea of, okay, it's 20,000 square foot city hall, 15,000 square foot city hall, it has room for future growth, it doesn't have room for future growth. When we start asking those questions and getting those answers through your staff, we can start generating just a template of what it might be, what this might be for you with regards to both police and city hall. We'll ask all the right questions, because I've built, I've built personally 30 police stations. I'm going to ask you, do you have dispatch in the building? Do you run 24-hour cells in the building? Do you have any cells in the building at all? All those just generate a quick answer for us that allows us to say, this is approximately what you're looking at. Oh, and by the way, this is what this city's done with the same-sized department, this city's done with the same-sized department, to give you a perspective of what the want is. It's not the answer, because eventually, a design team's going to come in behind and actually lay all those down, ask all the specific questions. What it does do is it generates the want. What do we want to build? Okay? At your level, not necessarily at the sergeant or the captain's level, because they'll want things like covered parking. That comes later. And then, we're also going to try to gather data when it comes to city image, catalyst for, we want to hear those things, because it's important, because as we look at different sites, we want to put those as pros and cons. I can't weight them. That's, that's what you guys will do. You'll weigh the importance of that, but you'll weigh it next to objective data regarding whether or not that particular site can even hold a police station in city hall. Then all of a sudden, that changes the whole dichotomy of the conversation, allows you to make good decisions on what and where. We will then look at the actual sites themselves, the where. When we look at sites, we take a very objective programmatic perspective on this. We start off with the site, and we say, okay, how big is it? What's the topography? What's the access and inputs? These are all objective things that we can bring back to you. Because police wants to come on and off two different streets. If one's closed, they want access to another street typically. So what sites allow that? What sites allow quick flow in and out of the facility? City hall's not as important. But when you have a court, or when you have a board meeting, often parking becomes very important. So do you have the capacity to lay down lots of parking? And would it have to be structured or not? Those are the kind of things we look at from a bird's eye viewpoint. And we kind of started doing that with one of the sites that we heard could potentially be in consideration. It's one you recently bought. That includes everything from access to existing structures, all the way to what's the rail going to do to us? The rail line. We then take it a step further, and because of our expertise, we look at what's on the site from the physical facilities. Because I also believe that the city probably would consider existing facilities. When we were down here six months ago, you guys were spitballing, there was some thought maybe on some medical office building that you might consider. You know, certainly nothing further than that. We walked through the building. What I'm looking for, as a builder who's done these, is the city hall requires volume. These spaces generally, the boardroom and the courtroom, require high volumes. So if you're going in a standard two-story office building that's got 14-foot clear height, which is the optimum for an office building, which means you've got nine-foot from ceiling tile down to floor, you've got to figure out a space where you can get the volume. And that's expensive. It's really expensive. But the nice thing about city hall is it is, other than that space, predominantly an office building. So it can work. When we looked at Cape Girardeau's police station, we looked at armory. They're like, this is perfect. We'll put a police station here. It's an armory, it's a stout building, it's masonry, good golly. Not only that, but if you look in the back, armories have the big spaces for the large equipment. Heck, you could put city, it's perfect. And functionally, for an office building, it is. But for a police station, police station by the new IBC codes requires that they're built to essential facility standards. That armory, that full masonry building, it didn't work. It was a no-go. It was better to tear the whole thing down than to try to come in and put a police station in that building. And I bring that because it seems so stark of an example. It's an armory, it's perfect, right? It's going to stand through anything. Not a masonry building, not without reinforced rebar. It shakes in an earthquake, falls right down on you. Okay? So those are the kinds of things we looked at. When we studied Glendale, when we, well, Glendale in particular was a million-two to retrofit their building for essential facilities. That was just structural improvements to the building. Okay, that's a lot of money. So we could throw those objective things at you right away. If you're looking at an existing building, I can go in and quickly tell you what premium cost you're going to have, depending if you want to do city hall, police, or both. And that helps you make quick decisions. Then all of a sudden, a property may not look so good. You know, and that helps, I think, cities and leaders of communities make key decisions, and that's what our focus would be. I can say, if you launch then into designing and construction, we take, again, the ownership role and the programmatic, program management of all phases of the project. I don't want to get into details here, because I've got about four minutes left, my 15, so I want to move quickly. We did talk about, well, I was asked to talk about costs. What do we cost? I mentioned the $14,000 to get us to a point where you can make a decision on what and where. And then when, if you launch, you'd go into the remaining services. First question everybody asks is, well, what do you burden our project? Are you going to cost us more? And to understand that, I wanted to present what goes into a project's cost, everything from financing to the architects and engineers, to the other consultants, all the way to the two line items that are very important, which are building construction cost, and then the contractor's overhead markup on bid day. We actually get paid out of those two line items. And we do not cause you to incur additional costs. Okay? It's a pretty bold statement, so I want to prove it, right? I want to show it to you, because everybody's like, yeah, whatever. We can certainly talk about all the subjective benefits we add to it, but I do want to go through that. The two ways we do it, and I'm going to show you a case study here in a minute, is Navigate reduces the cost of the building construction. I could truly say that I've worked with every premier police station, city hall architect in the region. All of them. You've got decent architects down here in town, you've got Wilson Estes in Kansas City, you've got Can and HOK in St. Louis, and everybody in between. I've worked with them all. Okay? When you work with them all, you get best practices from them all. Because each one does it differently. Each one has a better way to fix the problem, to come up, has a different solution for the problem. We've worked with them all, and we become a clearinghouse for that. And it allows us to bring different alternative constructive techniques, materials, better bid documents, and then certainly stronger contractor marketing, because we go out and market the living crud out of your project to encourage participation on bid day, and that makes a huge difference. We can do this also, because everyone on my team came from the general contracting business. We're all builders originally. Next, we reduce building construction overhead and profit. Obviously, we do that by lowering construction costs, but another way we do that is we will strategically pull out from underneath the general contractor on, for your benefit, direct purchase items, things that we can pull out from underneath them. For the Franklin County jail we're building currently, we pulled the entire detention piece out. It was smart. We got ahead on the detention, it's steel cells, so we got ahead of the cycle on steel manufacturing, which was big, especially with some tariffs. We bought it out independently, and on an $8 million package, we saved them 15%. Purely just raw overhead markup that general contractor would have placed on it to buy that for the county. We then will coordinate and manage that effort on behalf of the county for them. All in, our average savings are 12.3%. We did a taste, tech study of every project we had in 2017, municipal projects we had in 2017, we were generating 2.3% savings. Our costs are generally in 3% to 5% range. It depends on two things, how big your project is. You know, if it's a $23 million jail for Franklin County, our percent goes way down. It'll be less than 3%. You know, if it's a $2.5 million job, and generally, we don't work with too many clients where we're less than that $180,000, $200,000 range. So if you, if it's put on a $3 million job or $10 million job, it can be 2% or it can be 5%. It can swing pretty heavily. But there's, during construction, if you take a 12-month construction period, and you could build $3 million in that timeframe, you can take that same 12-month construction phase and build 6 million, the duration, we're down here, we're engaged in the contractor, we're doing the same process, and that's the reason why there's a fluctuation in the percentages. Okay? But we would sit down beforehand and give you a complete schedule of construction, once you know the want and the where, and we lump sum the value of it and get away from percentages immediately. Okay? We'd rather go into a job and lock in with the cost, especially as a small firm, small business in Missouri, than we would want to do percentages later on. Most cities like that. Mark, how am I doing on time?
That's okay. Just keep going.
Okay. We wanted to dive into 12.3. We mentioned the areas for which we make the biggest impact, alternative materials, owner-direct procurement, contract negotiations, field solutions, change order negotiations, miscellaneous, as what we documented in 2017, again, when we took our municipal projects and actually went through each one. I want to talk about alternative material and means. I've already spoken about it a little bit. There's a ton. I can't tell you how many times, I want to highlight what's in red. We have a database of solutions, best practices from all the police, city experts in the region. We do. Another thing, if I could put it in red, is you should never have to make a decision without knowing the cost. You should never have to make a decision as community leaders without knowing the cost. I think it's horrible when an architect or engineer comes to you and asks you to make a decision between a Cadillac and a Chevy, and don't tell you the cost difference between them. It shouldn't be expected, and we will never allow that to happen to you. So even when it comes to ballistics, which is an example there with the table, so many times people say, do you want ballistics on your dais? Because that's pretty consistent now. Most people want to be able to, in the case of an emergency, for their council members to be able to duck in behind the dais and then leave the exterior room, you know, through the exterior of the room, for safety reasons, to an antechamber outside the building. So they don't want to put ballistics on all the walls, it costs a lot of money, but at the dais, they do. Well, believe it or not, there's a remarkable cost difference shown on that table right there, depending on the type of wall ballistic panel we put in the dais. Okay? It can be a very thin panel that stops handguns, or it can be a more robust panel, and nobody tells you that. Nobody walks you through that. Well, as builders, we'll walk you through that, because we think you should be able to make those kind of decisions, or your staff should, and bring them to you with a basis of recommendation. Also, we know the national, local and national material vendors, and it's everything from steel cells versus concrete cells, and the pricing differences with that. We bring that to bear, and what it does, allows us to generate you a remarkably good set of design documents in collaboration with the designers, because ultimately, they've got to put this stuff on paper. Alternative materials, uh-oh, my slides got a little bit messed up. Oh, I'm going the wrong way, is why? I apologize. I'm going to be two minutes, and I'm done. Then the next example of cost savings is, you'll see a slide in your book, and I'm going to move fast, the one that you're looking at, Robert, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Smith, excuse me, was the one that showed the pictures of all the different facades. There is no cookie cutter. There really isn't. Every city wants a remarkably different look. You always do. We've done them all. So whether or not we're looking at steel panel, metal panels, and the cost of that, drive it. In Cape Girardeau, a lot of that's drive it with limestone. In St. Louis, it's red brick. We know the cost differences that give you that data too. So when you're looking at different pictures, you know what they cost, and you can make a decision not only which looks the best, but which one costs the most. Owner-direct, I mentioned this before, you will have a lot of owner-direct activities that we'll coordinate anyway, furniture, AV, phone systems. We take care of all that, so your staff isn't in the middle of it, trying to figure it out. Okay, that's a cost savings, but I can't objectively tell you what that's worth. I think your staff can. I think city managers and public work directors are like, oh, thank goodness I didn't have to spend those hours when I got to be doing all my other job, you know, everything else I do for the city. So we do do that. So you'll see that move then below. The first graph up top is a typical project. You've got Poplar Bluff, you've got an architect who hires the engineers, you've got the owner directs, that would be your furniture, phones. And then over on the right side, you've got a general contractor and all their subcontractors, vendors, and suppliers. We suggest that Navigate comes onboard, we become your liaison, your owner representative with all entities. So you would direct contract with us, you still are going to direct contract with your architect, and you're still going to direct contract with your general contractor and your directs, but we'll manage those for you. Okay? Everything from helping you write the contract and negotiate fees, you make the selections, we help you buy it. And then there's a lot of key things we can pull out from underneath that general contractor and direct buy strategically, save you a ton of money. We're good at it. We're really good at it. All right? That pays for us. Okay? I can look you all in the eyes and tell you that will pay for us. About the whole business on the idea, truly. If we can't pay for ourselves, you guys aren't going to use us. No matter how good we are, you still owe it to your community to say, look, I'm cost-neutral with this service. And last thing I wanted to hit, because short on time, was change orders. This is a perfect example. We validate, challenge, consult, price, negotiate, and confirm. We don't want any challenge, change orders. I think when we dive into drawings and you see the level of constructability reviews we do before it ever goes out to bid, you'd be like, wow, these guys caught a whole lot of stuff. Because we're general contractors at heart, we all grew up in that industry. You, they caught a whole lot of stuff that would have been change orders later. But there's still going to be things that happen, whether it be soils or an unforeseen condition in an existing building. Man, we do a great job. I've got Jen Kissinger and Colette, they're just unbelievable bulldogs when it comes to this. Don't bring a change order to this city unless you absolutely can prove it, because we're not going to let it get to you guys unless it's valid. And if it is, it needs to be the right price. In Ferguson, when we did that police station during the unrest, we had over $500,000 with a change order presented to the city in a hotbed of an environment, right? Where they didn't want any conflict at the point, they had enough going on. Literally, that piece of the building right there that you see with the glass, that became their, we just enclosed that building, and we hadn't done the finishes. And that became the news media room during the unrest.
Wow.
So we shut it down at that point, and then we were doing renovations on the police site still during that. They call up our team, we had two people on the job site and say, look, you know, you've got to get everybody out of there, because there's going to be a protest, or whatever it might be occurring. We lived through that. What's a good example of, though, is that they never hit the media that this was going on. Right? Because we handled it professionally for the city. We were fair, we were honest, and dang sure, they didn't get torn up by pricing changes. Okay? People want delay for this and delay for that. Well, we vetted that. It costs us a lot of money. Navigate a lot of money to vet that. None of that, we get paid zero for a change order, guys. I don't get paid a thing to vet a change order for you. It's my job. I'm supposed to be there representing you during a change order. Right? My job is to make sure the contractor doesn't get paid more than they're due either. That's the third way we really save you a lot of money. I'm going to get off the stage, I know you've got a lot going on tonight. Any questions? Oh, you can hire us, you're going to have to ask Mark. Baldwin and Olivet just hired us directly, because we're considered a consulting firm, professional service. A lot of the attorneys will say, now, you need to follow the QBS process by state statute. It all depends on what your local ordinance are for procurement. Again, we've had some cities hire us direct, and others have put out an RFQ. I'll be happy to show you my qualifications and compare them to any other competitor in the state of Missouri. Questions?
Any questions from the council? That was a very thorough presentation.
Too fast, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I saw your agenda, for gosh sakes. You've got a lot going on.
Oh, that's just the world we live in. Any questions from the council or comments?
One of the things I noticed when, actually, he asked to come and speak to Mark, Mark asked me to just sit in, I think I was the available council person at the time, so that was the reason I happened to have the opportunity to sit in and discuss. One of the things I noticed in that discussion was, man, he had a lot of questions that were questions that needed to be asked and determined. And that's the one takeaway that I took away from that initial discussion.
I think building a project the size that we're talking about is going to be very overwhelming, no matter what, and someone, a firm like yours, could step in and help alleviate some of that, that decisions that they're going to have to make. We will still make the decision, but you could be knowing what questions to ask, guiding us the right direction, that sort of thing. And, I mean, our city staff is stressed pretty much with the workload that they already carry, and you add a project like this on top of it, I think it could be very tasking. And I think it could be beneficial to us to hire a firm such as your own, you know, that could do this for us. Any other comments from council members or Mr. Messingham?
No, actually, the way this became about was the fire chief, Ralph Stucker, talked to this company at the Fire Chiefs Association, I think last year, the year before, brought me a brochure, and last year, I ended up calling and talking to Todd, and he came down, and, you know, things kind of got put on hold a little bit. But I wanted him to come down and explain to you all what their company does. I think in the long run, it's, it would be a great thing for us, it would help us a lot. And it's, as Councilman Black mentioned, he did ask a lot of questions that day that most of us don't even think about, because that's what he does. And I think in the long run, it'd probably save us money.
I agree with what you said, and we've been about this for several years. We've developed committees, and they've done a wonderful job, but we still need someone who's in the business to get us guided in the right direction, is what I'm thinking. Any other comments?
So Todd, we would still hire the architect and...
Yes.
And the general contractor.
And the general contractor.
Absolutely.
I mean, they work for us, but you're...
You would be the go-to person.
You'd be the go-to person.
Yes, I'll help you procure them at the best value and contract with them with Mark's support. It would, I'll support you, excuse me. But, man, we've got a lot of best practices. I'd love to roll into a contract with your contractors and so forth, just to help ensure that you're getting the best value. But you make all those selections. You know, our company is named, if I can say this real quick, after a kid that's in the Air Force Academy right now, Mark. And we're in Philmont on the trip with the scouts, and he was our navigator, right? He was never, he was getting us through the mountains. He was the one compass and everything else, and it made sense to me. You know, we're a navigator. But we weren't the crew chief, we're not the pilot. That's you guys. You know, we're going to help you and suggest where we're going to go and what the obstacles are, give you the data and the recommendation of the best route, but ultimately, you're gonna make the final decision on everything, on everything.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, well, I thank you very much.
Love the opportunity to work with you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not quite sure how to turn all of this off.
We'll get the lights flipped back on. Matt, could you turn those back on for us, please? Any questions or comments from the audience? It's a lot to take in.
He told me to unplug this.
Just take your time, that's fine. There's no rush, and don't fall. Or drop his computer, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We'll be in touch. Can you give us just a few minutes to get us set up again? Have safe travels home. Yeah, he's gonna do it. There you go. Put in doubt, unplug it. Okay, is there any other questions or comments from the council? Yeah, Matt, would you drag the podium back out in the middle for us and straighten that cord, so we don't have another accident? It's kinda over, it had to be over to the side for him, and then the Girl Scouts kinda got into it. And kinda keep, pull it back just a little more so the cord stays on this side, so they don't hang their toe in it. Thank you very much. Perfect. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to move item A to the voting session to be held on March 4th.
There's no action.
Oh, no action tonight? Oh, okay. So this is just for our information, then, is that what it is?
Information, I think if we wanna go this route, then we'll have to do a request for proposal or qualification, so...
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments and no actions needed on item A, we'll move on to item B. Item B, Mr. Shad Burner with Cargo Technologies, Inc., will appear before the council to discuss delivery services by their company in the city of Poplar Bluff. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, I'll try to not knock the podium down or anything, but thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you guys for having me tonight, I appreciate it. I don't know how much you want me to dive into the process before I just turn over questions.
It's your time.
Okay, very good. So I represent, my name's Shad Burner, I'm Vice President of Market Development for a company called Cargo. Cargo is a technology networking company based out of Cape Girardeau. What that essentially means is, we're kinda like Uber. We have technology that allows independent drivers who use their own vehicle to get connected to customers in your community who want a ride or want food delivered. Food delivery is probably the most commonly known thing that you may have seen throughout the community. We deliver from 25 restaurants in, about 25 restaurants in Poplar Bluff, including a lot of local restaurants and chain restaurants. We've done over 10,000 food deliveries in the market since we launched last April. And we have 40-plus drivers in the community who do this on their, when they want. They're completely independent drivers, so they can go on duty and work whenever they want and make a little extra money. So the reason I'm here tonight is because in Cape Girardeau, last summer, we launched a component of our service that is an alcohol delivery piece. And we would like to bring that to Poplar Bluff as well. So I wanted to briefly tell you what the process is, how we go through that, and why we think it's a good thing for our community. So quickly, let me start with what I think are the benefits of it. So we think that it's a safety thing. So if you are an individual who'd like to have some alcohol brought to you, whether you're at house, at your house, at a friend's house, chances are reasonably good that you've already, you may have already had some alcohol. So we like to eliminate the reason for you to get out and drive when you've already had some alcohol and you would like some more brought to you. So that's one thing, that we do think it's a safety issue in a community where this product's already available to anybody who wants to go purchase it from a store, we're just helping to get it to the location where they are. The other thing we think is that a lot of the national companies are moving in this direction. You'll see advertisements from places like Pizza Hut or Walmart that are starting to deliver alcohol. So what we do as a third-party provider is that we help the small, local guy do this. It's very difficult to afford the insurance when you're a local restaurant to have your own delivery drivers. So we cover all our drivers with our insurance, and we help the local guys, like in this instance, Wine Rack, who probably couldn't provide their own insurance. We do that for them, and we connect them to the community. And then finally, the other thing that I really think this is a component, when we step out, we think about this in a broader sense, and I come from an economic development world, is that I think this is about attracting talent and keeping people in your community. This kind of service is available in metro areas, all over the place. And when you think about what young people want in the places where they live, work, and play, they want this kind of service. They want Cargo to bring them food. And that's why we've been successful in Cape Girardeau and Poplar Bluff. And so I see this as a piece that you can continue to add something to your community that adds a little bit of excitement for that young individual who's thinking about whether or not they want to stay after they graduate Three Rivers and build a career here. So that's just a couple things, I wanted to kind of lay out why we think this is a good thing. Now, quickly, I'll kind of lay out the process for you. Our process is actually, I would say comparable, if not safer, than buying alcohol at a convenience store. So first of all, any of our drivers who are delivering alcohol choose to do that separately than the other things. They have to raise their hand and say, "Hey, I would like to be one of the alcohol drivers." They have to be over the age of 21, and then they have to take and pass the same test that any bartender in the state of Missouri would pass. So it's the SMART, is what it's called. And I'm trying to, it stands for State of Missouri Alcohol Responsibility Training. So they all have to take and pass that, so they understand what it's like to review a fake ID or any of that stuff. So once they pass that, they become a driver who's available to receive an alcohol request. When a customer gets on our app and they decide that they would like to order some alcohol, they can click into any restaurant that has alcohol, into the main level of the restaurant, anybody can click into that part. When they go to click in the portion of the menu that includes alcohol, they will be prompted to enter their date of birth. So they have to be over 21 to even review that portion of the menu on our app. Once they've entered their date of birth and they go into it, then they can place an order just like any customer at that point. When the order comes in, it will come to, in Poplar Bluff, it would come to one of two places. It would either, right now, we have Rhodes Gas Station that would offer their alcohol for delivery, and Wine Rack. So one of those two places, depending on where they went in the menu, it would pop up on a tablet in that location, and that alcohol provider would see that there's an order for alcohol. They would look at it, they would go get the order, get it all ready, and then when they're ready for a driver, they'll hit Request Driver. Our system will go out and find the closest available driver, ask that driver if they would like to take that order to the customer. It'll pop up, the driver will likely say yes, and then they're connected to it. So they then go into the alcohol provider. At that point, the alcohol provider is going to card our driver, because they're never going to hand that alcohol over to anyone without carding them. So they will card our driver at that point, our driver will show their ID, then they'll take the alcohol and start the next part of the delivery where they're going to the customer. When they get to the customer, there's another layer in our app, of course, we then have to verify that this customer is over 21. So what we do is, at the point where they're going to hand the alcohol over, our app prompts them to ask to see an ID. So they will look at an ID, and when they look at it, they'll use their training from the SMART training to determine whether that ID is valid, and does it match the name on the order that they have? It has to match. If it doesn't match, at that point, they will decline the order, and they'll be routed to take that alcohol back to the store. If it does match, they actually take a picture of the ID at that point through our app, not on their phone, and then our app will connect that picture of their ID into the database with that order. So we will have a record of who's buying what, and if there's ever any questions, we can certainly come back to that. And then that transaction is complete. And that's pretty much the general process. The other thing to note on this is that the payments on this, they don't actually come through until the full order's complete. The payment goes directly to the alcohol provider. Our technology will connect those two together, but when somebody puts their card in and they press Go, we hold it and then we ship it directly to the alcohol provider. So they're actually the ones selling the alcohol. And then that money for the portion that is delivery cost will then come to us, once they've collected their payment through our app. That allows us to comply with the Missouri Division of Alcohol and Tobacco Control, which is basically the one thing that we look at from a statewide compliance, is the flow of money in this situation. Once we were able to resolve that, they were very comfortable with us doing this in Cape Girardeau, and we've been doing this for eight or nine months now with no real issues at all.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
You were, now, if a customer declined the order or was not able to receive the order, you said that they would take it back to the store.
Correct.
Well, how are you getting around the Missouri law about the purchase of alcohol and returning it to the store?
The purchase is not actually complete until after we finalize that. So when the driver takes the alcohol out of the store, the purchase isn't complete yet.
But it's been off the premises?
Correct.
Okay.
But it is, it's...
I guess I'm not understanding that law.
So just let me clarify what kind of alcohol, I may not have a clear understanding of what you're asking, but we do only take packaged alcohol from a packaged reseller. And so that goes directly back to that reseller, and it's never left our driver's hands.
Okay, okay. That's the way. Okay.
Okay.
Have you had many issues of declining an order and having to take it back in Cape?
I mean, regularly, there are situations where we do have to decline orders, and our drivers, they follow the protocol, because they have some culpability in this situation as well. Because they're trained in this training, and they are electing to take some responsibility that they're only going to hand that over if that ID matches the person on the app. So, yeah, I mean, that does happen, but it's never been an issue. It always, the process typically works as it should. Another thing to note in this is that we have, Cargo has a customer support team that's based in Cape Girardeau, and they are aware and watching everything that occurs. So we have somebody who's, that driver can call and ask for guidance if there's any situation where they get uncomfortable with what's going on.
Your 40 drivers in the city limits, is that what you're saying, or are they in the county also?
So our drivers actually deliver up to eight-ish miles, so they go outside of the city limits.
Outside the city limits, okay. All right. It's a lot to take in.
I understand.
It's a new concept.
Yeah.
Which is not a no, but it's a lot to take in.
I can say that, I think, hopefully you guys have seen, or I'm sure the city of Cape would make available the ordinance that they passed to help regulate this. We also are in the process of working with the city of Carbondale, Illinois, and I think they're getting close to adopting an ordinance as well.
It's a real drinking town. You'll be very busy there.
It's a possibility.
Yeah.
Little carding could be a problem there, too.
Yeah, I think so. Well, it just, it puts a lot on that driver, and hopefully there, it's an honest driver that's gonna follow the protocol, 'cause to me, it looks like there's a lot of loopholes that could be in here.
I mean, you know, if you...
And who does it fall back on? Back on your company?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, in the violation?
Absolutely, yeah. Once the alcohol's in our driver's hands, it's pretty much our responsibility at that stage. You know, what I always like to say is to step back and look at this and think that our driver's going through the same training that that person who's working at the Rhodes Gas Station is going. And we're actually taking it a step farther by attaching the ID.
If they're not standing behind the counter with the lights on and cameras, they're at somebody's front door dropping it off.
Sure.
In the dark. I mean, it's a lot different than standing behind the counter and being a clerk, I think. Any other comments?
Yes, I think this is, I don't think it's a good thing for our community. I don't want, as a councilperson, to be a part of sanctioning alcohol delivery. We already have a lot of regulations, some of which I might, many of which I don't agree with, but I accept the law as it is. But I think we're only enabling, and I don't want to be a part of it.
Any other comments from council members? I think it's a lot for us to absorb in a 15-minute presentation or 10-minute presentation. I actually would like to research it some more. Does anyone else feel like that? That we need to possibly workshop it again? Because, I mean, I have seen it, the news clips, and I've heard about it, I've seen it in cities, but it's just a lot to take in, because I wasn't sure how it all worked, and you've been very good at explaining that, but...
True.
I'd like to maybe workshop it again, if the council would like to do that.
I don't need to workshop it.
You don't need to workshop it.
No.
I just like to research it all before I make decisions.
I know all I need to know, to draw my opinion.
I understand, and you're entitled to your opinion. Any other comments? Questions? Mr. Massingham, anything?
No, I was talking to the city attorney this afternoon, he did tell me that if you all decided to move this on, that we probably do need to workshop it one more time before it would be voted on. So if you all move it on, it'd be workshopped at the next meeting, then probably voted on the second meeting in March, so...
How does that sound to the council? Except for Councilman Black?
I make a motion, we just table it.
You make a motion, we table it. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second to table it. All right, that's what we'll do at this point, and we thank you for your presentation, and we'll table it, and we'll get back with you. Yeah, that's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now, we'll get back with you once we've had some time to research it, and we'll get you back on the agenda at that time.
Sure, very good, thank you guys.
All right.
Mayor, let's make sure we're all on the same page here. My understanding of a motion to table, it kills unless a member from this body makes a motion to bring it back to the table.
That is correct.
Okay.
Do you want a roll call vote on? Are we good with verbal? Are we good with verbal? Or do we need a roll call vote? Does any member want a roll call vote? Are we good with a verbal vote? Verbal? Okay, it's been tabled by Councilman Black, and it's been motioned and seconded and approved. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item C. The city council will review a request from the Sycamore Street Community Improvement District Board of Directors relative to the appointment of directors for a three-year term. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, this is basically a housekeeping item. The Sycamore CID is located on the east side of Poplar Bluff, the old grocery store over there, and they're asking Brad Goodman, Jennifer Cooksey, and Barbara Bray be appointed to that board, and it's the city council's duty to appoint that board.
What were those names again, sir?
It's in your iPad.
Brad Goodman, Jennifer Cooksey, and Barbara Bray, B-R-A-Y. Those terms would expire March 6, 2022.
If that is acceptable, I would accept a motion and second to move item C to the voting session to be held on March 4th.
So...
Second, second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny a request to rezone properties from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional for future medical office use. The planning department recommends the approval of this request. The properties are vacant land, track one, north of Barron Road, and northwest of May Street, and east of Vaughn Street. Tracks two and three lie north of Barron Road and east of May Street. Applicants are David and Sandy Donnelly, 237 Kensington, Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Mr. Matt Winters.
Thank you, ma'am. As the mayor stated, the applicants are David and Sandy Donnelly. They're requesting to rezone from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional, two tracks of vacant land that she described. The surrounding land use for these properties is RS2 Single Family Residential. The properties, as she said, are located on accesses from May Street off of Barron Road. The frontage on Barron Road adjoins RS2 General Residential with the long-established neighborhood, and the property to the northwest adjoins the long-established Vaughn Avenue neighborhood. The O1 district designation offers an opportunity for a transition for medical offices within neighborhoods and the neighboring nursing home residential care businesses. Designation of these properties as O1 Office Professional follows a trend in this area farther west on Barron Road that includes Northwest Medical Center, the Newly Flower Shop, and vacant land fronting on Barron and Morrison Road. The Manor has also submitted a request for the same zoning designation that was recently tabled at Planning and Zoning. The recommendations of the staff include that all traffic must use May Street for egress and ingress, and that a 50-foot wooded buffer zone will be retained on the west property line of track one that abuts the eastern line of the residential subdivision on Vaughn Avenue. As the mayor stated, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted last Monday night to recommend that this request be denied. I think you also have a petition from the residents that was presented also to City Clerk Pam Kirby. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
I don't know if we have any questions, but we do have a comment. I regard highly the petition that's been presented by property owners that have made investment in that area.
And this is the workshop session, and I believe some of those folks are in the audience, and they may want to come forward and speak. At this time, we'll have someone that might want to speak for it, if you'd like to come forward first. Mr. Donnelly?
My name is David Donnelly, from 237 Kensington, Cape Girardeau, Missouri. I want to thank the city council for hearing this rezoning request. These are the facts, as I've understood them through the two meetings that I've attended with the Planning and Zoning. The concerns that were brought up, well, these are the facts, as I understand them. About 20, 30, 40 years ago, there were two nursing homes that were allowed on this land that we owned under a special, or a conditional use permit. At that time, I feel like with two nursing homes there, that set a precedent for an office medical use at that time. I entered into a contract with Dr. Michael Schifano with Heartland Harrisburg Properties to purchase the three tracks of land that we're talking about rezoning, but the contract is subject to commercial zoning being obtained. But after reviewing with the Poplar Bluff City Planner, Mr. Winters, it was agreed upon by the doctor and myself and him that as a use for a women's medical clinic on that property was, doing a medical use to an office one was less intrusive zoning than commercial. So we decided to go with the office one medical office use. The city planner and his department has recommended that it be approved. When those two nursing homes were allowed there, those many years ago, there was a concern that was brought up at one of the meetings that we needed to save some, that Poplar Bluff needed to save some of its residential land for residential properties to be built. I have, over the last 15 years, tried to market this as a residential property on numerous occasions with no luck, no developers to take on this property, and I myself not to take it on. I feel like if you drive through two nursing homes to get to your house, that's not a very good setup for a builder to build homes. And let's just face it, cemeteries and nursing homes are not a good place to build residential properties. So when that was allowed to go there, those two, back then, that set the precedent for an office medical use at that time, in my opinion. The other issues that came up were traffic. So in order to handle the traffic issue for the people there, there apparently is some kind of safety issue with a hill or a curve around the area. It was agreed to that there would be no ingress and egress off of Barron Road, which would hinder or cause more safety issues. The only ingress and egress will be off of May Street, not off of any other street to these three tracks. Only May Street will it be able to be accessed, ingress and egress. The next issue was water issues. There's a lot of water that runs down through that four-acre tract that gets down, and a lot of the locals, local people had a concern that this was going to be an issue. Well, it was explained by the city planner, Matt, and by an engineer at the meetings, that the stormwater plan must be approved by the city before anything can be built upon that. You guys already have ordinances in place, you already have things in place that will[1794.04] You guys already have ordinances in place, you already have things in place that will address stormwater drain and issues of that nature before a building can even be built. So to my knowledge, except for one person on the board at that time that kept saying the water issues is still a problem, I don't see how with the city having to come up with the stormwater plan, and the builder has to apply to it, apply with it. Some of the neighbors, as mentioned by Matt while ago, had a concern about, well, maybe there's going to be a big ugly-looking building built back on the 13 acres or so back there. So in order to handle that issue, Dr. Shifano agreed to a very, what I consider a very good 50-foot green area between the houses and any office medical building that would be built for the residences, so they would not have to look at those buildings in their backyards. The last one I mentioned, or the other one, was once again for residential development. I'm hindered. I can't develop residential with two nursing homes in the middle of it. It's just not going to go, no one's going to develop it. So I still don't understand why the Planning and Zoning rejected it. All these things were, and plus, I don't understand why it wasn't voted on for approval. It was voted on for rejection. We asked for it to be voted on and changed to approve it. It was, and I don't understand how that all happened, but after disclosing the facts, you know, I was shocked at the vote. The city planner and his crew, I'm sure they felt, I don't know, we just don't understand why that happened. So I ask the council here tonight to put aside the zoning committee's recommendation to reject and make things right by approving this request.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Donnelly? If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak against the rezoning, they're welcome to come forward. We ask your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council. Todd Talkington, 2859 Vaughn Avenue. You know, I've been a lifelong resident of Papa Bluff, last 21 years have been at Vaughn Avenue, where I've raised, you know, my two daughters who both reside and work in Papa Bluff. This is where we, me and my wife, are planning on retiring whenever that day comes. You know, whenever we bought this house 21 years ago, not only did I look at, you know, the street that it was on, which is a nice dead-end street, very little traffic, I also looked at the adjoining properties to see how they were zoned. And obviously, the property that's in question, most concerned to me and the other residents is track one, and that is, you know, zoned residential. So in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, at some point, they would probably develop a residential neighborhood, and that's fine. But, you know, there's also been others on Vaughn Avenue who have lived there longer than I have, some up to 40 years. So that's obviously, you know, Vaughn Avenue, obviously, and that is a well-established neighborhood, has been there for quite some time. And honestly, I never dreamed that, you know, someday I'd be up here taking a stand against a proposal to rezone this from residential to commercial, but, you know, here we are today, and it's just, in my opinion, and speaking with some of the other, you know, residents and property owners on the street who have signed this petition, you know, we just don't really see where it makes a whole lot of sense to have this property rezoned, you know? It kind of seems like, you know, you're piecemealing or, you know, trying to develop a commercial property that's, you know, right next to a well-established residential neighborhood. You know, once it's rezoned, you know, there's really no way to know, you know, what business or businesses, you know, would, you know, look to occupy the property. It's another concern that we have, obviously. There's also a real and valid concern regarding the water drainage associated with any future commercial developments. Anybody that's traveled Barron Road over the years knows whenever we get a heavy rain event, you know, that's an issue, and we're, I have real concerns that this, you know, continue to be a problem with any future commercial development. Also of concern is also the traffic on Barron Road. You know, prior to moving to Vaughn Avenue, I lived on Barron Road, right next to the water tower, so I know there's a lot of traffic on that road, and we're concerned that, you know, commercial development, especially on the back track, you know, would create a lot more traffic on Barron Road. And maybe that's something to be addressed in the future with maybe, you know, widening of Barron Road or whatever. But, you know, I know Papa Bluff continues to grow, and, you know, I've been in business for a long time, and I want to see Papa Bluff grow. It's in our, you know, best interest that it do so. You know, bringing in more businesses is, you know, what the city's looking to do, and I'm totally for that. Brings in more tax dollars, obviously, we need that as well. I'm all for that, but, you know, in my opinion, and the other residents on Vaughn Avenue, we feel like that there are other places and opportunities for those commercial properties and businesses, you know, to be a part of Papa Bluff. So we're basically just asking that you, you know, carefully consider the request by the residents of Vaughn Avenue, and you have the petition, I think, in your packet that's been signed by everyone that I spoke to, and our request is that you not rezone the property from residential to commercial. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Talkington from the council?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
My name is Dennis Smothers. My wife Kay and I have lived at 2001 Barron Road for over 40 years. This is across the road there on Barron from West Side Church of God. We share 313 feet of our property that joins this property that's in, what is it, track two and three, I guess, that lays against me there. Now, I'm not opposed to any progress, I think the city needs it, but I do have some concerns, is basically what I'm here. I actually don't know whether to tell you to vote for or against the thing. I don't know what, how it's going to affect us, all right? It is, if it were to be rezoned, can we expect that green space that he's talking about there while ago, or some area, or a privacy fence? Because I quite frankly don't know what to be expected there. Now, I'm just concerned that that front piece there, more than what this other gentleman talked about there. During a hard rain, I can guarantee you, after living there 40 years, and I know what that bottom will be, it turns into a lake, and I've seen it many, many times before it grew up and the way it's grew up now. I am concerned that if they control that in a certain way, maybe it'd be all right, but if it backs up on me, I'm not going to be a happy camper. And if you come there when it's raining good and hard, you'll understand what I'm talking about. In the past, we've often had garbage trucks in the distance when the hospital there down in the valley is still active, and they'll wake you up at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, whatever time it was, before daylight anyway, and you can hear them trash trucks dumping that thing. And I just hate to think that I had one of those in my backyard. And actually, at one point, from the corner of my garage to this property line is about 20 feet or less than, actually. And if we do rezon this in this gentleman's favor here, and he builds something that I can't quite stand, and I have to feel like I want to move or something, then do we come to you and say if we can rezon mine? You see what I meant there? Quite frankly, I got a good place for an office on top of that hill there. You'd have to tear the whole house down, but I don't want to do that. I've been there a long time, and I'm satisfied with it. And it appears to me that in the area, there's already plenty of empty and vacant medical facilities that I don't think is being used fully there. Barron Road, as it's already been mentioned, has got a lot of crazy traffic on top of the hill there. If I want to pull out there, sometimes I may have to wait on eight, 10 cars to go by before I can even get on Barron Road myself. I think that's all I'll say. I've got more here, but I think I'll just quit at that. I just understand, put yourself in our situation, know how you'd feel there. So thank you for your time. God bless y'all.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Smothers, comments from the council? Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Please come forward.
John Standard, 1310 Barron Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri. I'm not sure what my standing might be before this group at this moment, but I want to talk about this issue. I live about a half mile away on Barron Road, which is quite a ways away, but I want to talk about zoning. P&amp;Z voted this down for a real good reason, is RS2 residential does not need commercial or office immediately abutting it. If it has to be rezoned for some reason, and it doesn't, then multifamily is the zoning, that's what zoning is all about. I served on the zoning commission many years ago, and I spent a lot of time studying what zoning is. And you don't put commercial against residential, and this town is full of examples. The Mansion Mall Shopping Center abuts Atkins Subdivision, which is a real shame, but it happened years ago. The only thing between those properties is a chain-linked fence that catches trash. And think about that. So if it has to be rezoned, multifamily or apartments probably would work just fine using May Street, even though there are nursing homes there. Instead of trying to build beautiful homes, maybe people would object going by the nursing homes. You don't rezon property for people or individuals, you rezon property for the best use of the property. That is pure zoning policy, I can assure you. A 50-foot buffer zone would be completely ineffective, and I have watched this for more than 50 years, where we have a buffer zone, and I have yet to see the first one that means anything. And then there's the traffic situation, and I came down here last August and was complaining about the traffic on Barron Road, because I live there, and I haven't heard any more about that. I would hope that somebody is doing the research that I was promised on that issue, but the traffic is not getting any better. And I certainly am not speaking about personalities. I don't know Mr. Donnelly at all, but I've had my say. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, John.
Are there any questions for Mr. Standard, or comments from the council? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak?
Butch Davis, 2840 Vaughn. I'd just like to really express my concern about the traffic and the water also. I've seen water up over that little hump there, or the bridge there. And the traffic, I've seen an awful lot of accidents there, and I really wish that you wouldn't, that you deny this request. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Davis, or comments from the council? Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Okay, how about discussion amongst the council?
One question from Mr. Winters, if it would be all right. Matt, that area northeast of this property in question, I believe it's 17 acres, is that county property? A majority of it, or a great deal of it?
What's included in this request is all within the city limits.
Okay, but I'm talking about adjacent property.
Adjacent to the north.
North and east, yes.
The majority of the adjacent property is outside of the city limits.
Okay, and there is a road there that runs off Barron into that area, but my question is, is if there wouldn't, if there isn't a possibility of some potential avenue into that area from that road that's northeast of the property? I mean, it's my understanding or impression that this is just locked in, and that there's no avenue to get to that, if it was residential or state residential. But I perceive that there's an area back there and a road that runs just, it would be west of Temple Baptist Annex that goes north, and like I said, I'm not that familiar with the area, but it's just hard for me to believe that there wouldn't be another avenue into that area.
It's pretty, if you don't mind. I mean, that parcel in the back is surrounded by other privately-owned properties. Some of it is in the county to the north and to the east of that, but there is other private property that's adjacent to it, between it and any other public streets. So for it to be accessed, there would have to be other properties purchased to create an access to it, I guess.
But I mean, that is a potentiality, that there would be another avenue off of that area.
To be honest, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't remember, I mean, I didn't look at that, where another access point could be. I really, I don't know, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Some of the, I'm on planning and zoning, and some of the other discussion, one of the council, one of the commission members asked about widening Barron Road at that spot, because there's going to be so much traffic, should you put in an office building or subdivision or anything? You know, our budget's tight, there's not money to widen Barron Road at this time, but those deep ditches and how that water flows, that was a concern from one of the commission I personally feel like that we are running out of residential area, and I hate to see us give up a valuable piece of land. I know that Vaughn right now is a dead-end street, but it could become, should they put a nice subdivision in there, they might be able to work out a way to access through there, possibly. But the narrowness of May Street is part of what the concern is, to put a big office building back there, is what the discussion was. And I'm like Councilman Black, I think we need to respect the people that are on the petition as well. The green space that we put up, we try our best, but sometimes they are not as effective as they should be, and you have bright lights, you have a tall building overlooking into a subdivision, and, you know, we kind of had that situation with the last time that this happened, when we did that. A few months ago, this council denied another piece of land on Katy and Barron Road that was kind of the same situation. So I actually made the motion to deny, and it was carried, and that's how it got to hear Mr. Donnelly ask how it happened, but I made the motion to deny the request to rezon this. In 1972, they brought all the properties in as residential, and today, as new pieces of property are annexed into the city, we try to properly zone them so that they come in in what their intent is to be. But back in 1972, of course, they hadn't even built the nursing homes, so in the 80s, I think, when the nursing homes got built, they are built on a conditional use. So also, at planning zoning, it came before us that they wanted to clean up, to maybe make it, if this would get approved, to also make that get in the proper zoning. But it really protects the neighborhood and the integrity of the neighborhood now, because with the conditional use, neither one of those nursing homes can add on any structure, any building, anything, without coming back before the commission. So you have a stopgap that they can't just do something that we don't know is happening. And I feel like that's what we have to do when you butt up against a residential area, especially at one that's 40 years old. So that just is some of the background of what happened during the planning zoning. The neighbors, not only on Vaughn Street but on Barron, I got lots of calls, so I have documentation, you know, they're concerned about the water, they're just, because they've had to spend lots of money to fix their yards due to this water. Yes, I know, we have ordinances in place that take care of that, but sometimes you can't foresee what's going to happen. Yes, they follow the rules, yes, they put in the storm drainage, but, you know, as Bluff Estates got built, there's been lots of issues over there where water has run down, and I think even Atkins has had some problems with some of the last pieces that got filled in there, that we've had some issues with it, that fall on personal property, so the city can't fix it, and it was in the design of the neighborhood. So I just think we need to take it serious and cautiously before we make a decision to rezon something.
I also tend to want to always, Bill, I want to respect planning and zoning, who are volunteers that do this work in behalf of the city. Now, does that mean I'm always going to side with them? Not necessarily, but I want to generally support them. I think they do, they are asked to do their work, and they spend their time, and so I will tend to support their recommendation, which in this case would be to deny.
Is that in form of a motion? Is that in form of a motion?
I'll make that.
So, we have a motion to deny?
That's a workshop, so.
Is, to go to the voting session? Or do, or you want to keep it in workshop?
I think we.
It'd be in order to move it to?
Primarily, we need to move it, I guess.
We need to move it to the voting session, yes.
So, yeah, so, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make the motion to pass to the voting session, but I understand that's what we need to do, and then we'll make a decision there.
So, we need a request to move it to the voting session with approval or denial?
We got to move it there, I'll back up, I will make a motion.
Okay. Okay, so, we have on the table a motion to deny the request and move it to the voting session?
No, we're just going to move it to the voting session.
Just going to move it to the voting session.
Then we'll decide there whether we deny.
Let me restate it, I apologize. It's been a long night. It's been a challenging night.
We're just going to move it to the voting session.
So, I have a motion on the table to move item D to the voting session to be held on March fourth.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any other discussion? All we're doing is moving this item to the voting session to be held on March fourth. Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
This is, this is just to move it to the voting session, okay?
I'm still going to vote no.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Black?
Yes, procedurally, I think we need to move it to the voting session.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh?
Yes.
We have four yes votes and two no votes.
So, item D has been approved to move to the voting session, this will come back up on our agenda as a voting item on March the fourth. Item E, the city council review request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the request to rezon properties RS2 general residential and C2 general commercial for future commercial use. These properties are located at twenty-two fifty and twenty-six oh-four Russell Road. The applicants are Connie Hurt, Teresa Heiser, and Stacy Medley, P O B fifty, post office box fifty, Fair Dealey, Missouri. Mr. Winters.
I'll sit close because you get to see me a lot tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As, as she stated, the applicants are Connie Hurt, Teresa Heiser, and Stacy Medley. They're requesting to rezon property from RS2 general residential to C2 general commercial. The properties are located at twenty-two fifty and twenty-six oh-four Russell Road, which lies south of Holiday Inn and are contiguous to the Taco Bell restaurant on Westwood Boulevard. The surrounding land use to the north, south, and east are all C2 general commercial, and to the west is RS2 general residential. The designation of this property as C2 would be enlarging the commercial property in this area. It is contiguous with the current commercially zoned property to the east, north, and south. A ten-foot strip of their property is actually already zoned C2 general commercial because of land that had to be returned to them from the Taco Bell development when the Taco Bell was constructed. The rezoning of this property would be within the already established C2 commercial corridor. The staff recommends approval of this zoning request, as did the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, any discussion from the council or motion?
Make a motion, pass it to the voting session.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to move item E to the voting session to be held on March the fourth. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby. Did they get it out of order? All those in favor? Consensus, okay with the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I've lost my rhythm here. Item F, the city council review request from the Planning and Zoning and Electrical Board to amend Code of Ordinances, chapter five twenty, by creating a new section, five twenty dot two six five, to mandate continuing education requirements.
So, the, you should have a copy of the ordinance. I can see my papers, I can't see my phone. And I don't have this on the paper, so. The Electrical Board is asking to adopt this, the ordinance you have, which will add continuing education to all contractors who hold electrical licensing within the city of Poplar Bluff. Some of the requirements are for the, the licenses for electricians are either one year or three years, and so for a one-year license, they're wanting to require two, two hours of continuing education, and for a three-year license, six hours of continuing education. The continuing education could be either classroom or online instruction that relates to the currently adopted National Electric Code that the city has in place, which is right now, two thousand and seventeen. Any continuing education programs and courses will be subject to the approval of the City of Poplar Bluff Electrical Board, who will determine whether it provides appropriate and adequate National Electric Code instruction. Continuing education programs and courses relating to the N E C that are approved by other governmental jurisdictions that require continuing education shall be accepted by the City of Poplar Bluff. This, they're asking to take effect as of January first, two thousand and twenty. And like I said, this was, this was brought before the Electric Board and approved by the Electric Board to recommend. They did hold, as with all boards, they held a, a public workshop for this, that there were five or six electricians that are licensed that attended, that all spoke in favor of it. Several of those were licensed in other states, such as Arkansas, that do require continuing education. I think this is a good way to ensure that the folks that, that we license as electricians are staying on top of current codes and current methods and, of practice for electricians. And it was also modeled off other cities, other governmental entities' requirements for continuing education, that different models were used as examples.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winters, and again, I appreciate your forward thinking on adding things like this to it.
This is all the Electric Board.
The Electric Board, well, that's.
Yes, they have a.
Kudos to our Electric Board, then, that's, that's wonderful that they would add this layer to themselves, because I think it does show some responsibility on their part, showing that they are proactive with it.
Yes, you know, to ensure that, that quality work is done in our city, I think, is, is important.
And the safety of our.
To their, to their profession, you know.
Their profession, safety of our citizens, because electrical work does cause a lot of fires.
Does.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Make the motion, move this to the voting session, March fourth.
Second.
Motion is second to move item F to the voting session to be held on March fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will review a proposed resolution allowing the city to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, this item is regarding the property we bought, the Childers property, last month. And what this means is if we decide to construct a building down there, a project, and we do bonds or certificates of participation, we have to pass this resolution in order to get reimbursed from those bonds for the purchase of that property. We purchased it with our reserves out of capital fund, and we have to do this within at least sixty days of the closing of the property. We're not committed anything other than if we do decide to do something down there, we can get reimbursed for the property.
Any questions from the council? If not, entertain a motion and second to move item G to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're to action required items. A A, bill number eight one two two. The city council will take action on ordinance approving change order number three for P P Highway Pedestrian Bridge Grant Project.
Move first reading of bill number eight one two two. Second.
Motion is second for first reading, bill number eight one two two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me just a moment. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three related to the Poplar Bluff P P Highway Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Motion for second reading of bill eight one two two.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number eight one two two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three related to the Poplar Bluff P P Highway Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt, bill number eight one two two. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
I'm so sorry. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor McVeigh?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill number eight one two two has been adopted. Item B B, resolution number one eight eight nine. The city council will take action on a resolution allowing the city of Poplar Bluff to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Motion for the reading of resolution number one eight eight nine. Second.
Motion and second for the reading of resolution one eight eight nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Richardson?
A resolution determining the intent of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Motion for adoption.
Motion and second for adoption of resolution one eight eight nine. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Resolution number one eight eight nine has been adopted. Item C C, the city council will take a meet, a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters that are exempted under the Openshooting Meeting Law, section six ten dot zero two one dot one, dot two, dot three, dot nine, dot eleven, dot twelve, dot thirteen, dot fourteen, R S M O.
Motion to move into closed session following city manager's report. Second.
Motion is second to move into closed session after city manager's report. Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Will move into closed session after city manager's report. Mr. Massingham?
Just a little update on Shelby Road. I keep, a lot of people keep asking me when we're going to open that. They're actually finishing up the concrete work now, as you can see. Of course, the weather hasn't helped matters any, but I was told, though, that they need about ten days of fifty-degree weather in order to stripe the road, so when we get that, I'm not sure, so it may be, maybe the end of March or first of April before they're able to stripe it, which we sure don't want to open it without it striped, but I'll keep you updated as that progresses. Only other item is, several of us went to Jeff City last week for the Missouri Municipal League Legislative Conference, learned quite a bit in that conference, and actually got to visit with three of our legislators, and spent quite a bit of time with them in the Capitol, and I thought that went very well, meeting with the legislatures, and we appreciate what they do for us in Jeff City.
Thank you, Mr. Massingham, and I agree. I think it was one of the most informative legislative update meetings that we've had. There's over a thousand bills being introduced, and we have lobbyists at work for us, our League of Cities, that are helping to protect our cities, with the new law of passing medical marijuana, that we're going to be dealing with some new resolutions and ordinances that will have to take place, and it was very eye-opening on some of the things they talked about. There are several, several issues. The use tax is still coming up, the wayfare tax, and there's so many things that are upon us, and they are so good to keep us informed, and I just really appreciate the city allowing us the time to go up there and being able to serve on the M M L board as well. So, I felt like it was a good use of our time. Is there anything else to come before the council? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1784.91]